It was Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I've called the meeting to order and there's an offer of prayer by the Reverend Michelle Lewis of the Mighty Wind Methodist Church. Oh holy God, we thank you for the joys of the day and even give thanks for those things that have brought us sorrow. Forgive us for the times when we have forgotten to marvel at the wonders of the world, the cool breezes, the crashing of the waves, the rising and setting of the sun. We thank you for the wisdom of our ancestors, those that have gone before us, teaching us, praying for us, and leading the way, especially in those times when we didn't know which way to turn. Tonight, we seek your wisdom for this body as we prepare to make decisions on behalf of all the people of Dare County. Let it be shown through our actions and decisions on this night that we are a body that loves all the people in this county and that we desire to make decisions wherein that love will be evident. We thank you for the commitment for those who have worked so diligently to keep us safe, doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, and firefighters, the military, and all those essential personnel who have staffed pharmacies and grocery stores and other places to ensure our daily needs are met. In this time where coronavirus has created difficulties for so many "grant us peace" of mind with the remembrance that you are ever-present in the midst of trouble, bring physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual healing to those who are sick, comfort those who mourn the loss of loved ones and are challenged with learning new waves of mourning. We thank you for deeper human connection and pray that you keep us ever mindful that socially distant doesn't have to mean emotionally distant. We thank you for these deeper connections in spirit of the distance created through meetings conducted via phone or video. We thank you for leading and guiding our work in this session and for hearing our spoken prayers and the prayers that exist in our hearts. Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that all commissioners are present this evening. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda are the opening remarks from the chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. I just have a couple of things to go over this under chairman's comments, recap a couple of things that I put in a video this past Friday. I want to, once again, want all of our visitors to know that our community welcomes you back with open arms. We did this early Saturday morning this past weekend. I just want to remind them that because of safety concerns, that we're still in place by executive order by the governor of North Carolina. And certainly, your vacation on the Outer Banks will be a little different than previous trips that you've made in the past. Right now, we are certainly still under Phase One of the governor's plan, which we hope the governor will soon lift. Hopefully, we'll hear something midweek that we go into Phase Two. But it mandates certain restrictions that everyone in Dare County must follow. For example, certain businesses are still closed, such as bars, personal care services, entertainment venues, gyms. Retail businesses are allowed to operate but at a 50% capacity and certainly must follow stringent requirements from the state. At this time, the governor's plan certainly only allows restaurants to continue to have takeout and drive-through or delivery service. I want you to all be aware, there's no seating allowed indoors or outdoors. And as most of you all know, the Outer Banks is famous for its great restaurants, and our restaurateurs certainly look forward to serving you very, very soon. But right now, for the time being, your culinary experience is certainly a little bit different than in the past. While the governor's restrictions will change the vacation experience, I'm happy to report that our beaches of the Outer Banks remain open. For the most part, we have had really, really good results in all the towns and the park service that people are really working hard to practice social distancing and not gathering in groups of 10 or more. So that's very, very encouraging to hear that from our different municipalities and the park service. Keep in mind that even on the beach, it's still important that everyone follow the six-foot social distancing guidelines that you've certainly been accustomed to up till now. When you plan your vacation trip to the Outer Banks, keep in mind that as the supply chains fluctuate across the country, you could see changes in product availability right here in Dare County. Even on vacation, we all need to remember that the virus is certainly not over. We must remain vigilant about the steps that will help ensure everyone's safety and as we open the Outer Banks. Please practice the governor's three Ws: wear, wait, and wash, you know, will help keep your family safe, and it will help ensure the health and safety of those in the business that you encounter while on your vacation. I know that I speak for everyone in saying that this pandemic has been a troubling ordeal, but as we start the process of welcoming back visitors, and we already have welcomed back the non-resident property owners several weeks ago, it's important we all work together to do this safely. Whether it's standing in line at the grocery store or waiting for restaurant takeout, we all need to practice the three Ws. And it's my hope that we will do that, and we'll continue to show each other the type of compassion and kindness that the Outer Banks is predominantly known for. So I wish everyone a very good help in safety while they visit, as well as our local residents the same. Second item I have is this week is EMS Week, May 17th through the 23rd. It's present and a timely opportunity for us to give special thanks and show gratitude to the Dare County EMS personnel serving our community. The theme this year is EMS Strong, Ready for Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. Our staff are on the front lines of the nation's war on the COVID-19 pandemic, and every day, 24/7, they respond to the call for help. We're very grateful for the extremely high level of care that our community receives here in Dare County, and we thank our Dare County EMS. We receive emails and letters on a regular basis from folks singing high praises about the care they receive from our compassionate and caring team. In 2019 alone, EMS responded to 9,716 incident requests. If you do the math, that's an average of 26.6 responses per day. 359 lifesaving med-flight missions, that's almost one a day, almost one a day. So to celebrate, staff has reached out to the chamber and the local business community, and they've asked them to show their support on marquee signs. I hope you see some of those this week. This year, they also released a coloring page for children. Kids can color this page. I think I have a sample here that I could, I thought I had a sample of that. I do. There's a sample here of the coloring page that our kids can color. I don't know if you can see this or not, but let me hold it over to the side. Here we go. There's a sample of the coloring page that they make their own art, they draw on it and color it, and they drop it off at any EMS station. In exchange for their artwork, EMS staff, while maintaining social distances, staff will give a small token appreciation in return for those kids that do this and turn it in at the EMS stations. You can find more information on EMS Week, and here's a second one that you can color in. We got two that they can do. You can find the information of EMS Week, download the coloring pages on our website to get these copies of these. This year, EMS Week in Dare is also held in honor and in memory of recent passings of former EMS Captain Denny Shoup, EMS Captain Billy Deans, Chief Dare Med Flight Pilot Sammy Pledger, and also Director of Operations Chief Dare Med Flight Pilot Chad Jones for their service and their dedication. So very special week in Dare County, and please keep our EMS in your thoughts and prayers during this EMS Week. That completes my chairman's comments, County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item two on the agenda is public comment. Public comment has been allowed prior to the meeting, and we'll wait a second to see if we get any more public comments in the next minute or two while you're waiting, but you should have received some prior to now as well.
to the next agenda item.
Everybody fine?
We're good.
Okay.
Item three on the agenda is a public hearing. Several meetings ago, or I guess one meeting ago, we talked about trying to do something with our restaurant rules to allow our restaurants to be prepared to do some things, and I think Mr. Bateman?
Mr. Chairman, being in the restaurant business, I think that I would like to ask the board to reclusive me from the total proceedings in this to make sure that there's no possible conflict.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Do I have the approval of the board to have?
Mr. Chairman, if you have a motion. A motion and a vote.
The motion by Commissioner House is there?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. I propose, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bateman, we'll come grab you when we get done with this item. So several meetings ago, or a meeting ago, we talked about trying to do something with our restaurant rules in light of what we expect the governor to do in the coming days in opening up our restaurants and allowing them to plan and be prepared. Donna, our planning director, has worked hard to come up with some guidelines that we think have been helpful. She's worked with the Restaurant Association and talked to them and looked at some of the things that they thought were important and tried to incorporate those things into the ordinance that's in front of you now. That ordinance has been to the planning board, and the planning board has approved it and recommended approval to you all. Before you all can act, we need to have a public hearing, and so I'll open the public hearing on that issue. That public hearing is done online as well, and people have had the opportunity to send in comments prior to the meeting, and we'll wait a minute or two to see if we get any more during the meeting on this issue. One last thing I will say, I think that was advertised for a 5 o'clock public hearing, is that right? So people would have had 20 minutes now to comment if they wanted to on that issue in addition to the days leading up to this, so plenty of time for public comment. I haven't seen any, Mr. Chairman. You want to move on on this one?
Absolutely. If it's a pleasure of the board.
Yeah. All right. Donna is on remotely if you all have questions. If you do not, then there's a, if you're going to approve it, there's a suggested motion in your packet, and you can move forward using that motion if you choose.
Mr. Chairman, I move the proposed draft temporary provisions for restaurants and mobile food trucks to be adopted as recommended by the planning board. The temporary provision shall be effective until December 31, 2020, unless extended by the Dare County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Floor is open for any discussion on the motion. Donna, are you there? I just want to make sure I'm clear on this piece of it. The mobile food unit shall be located on the parcel of land in conjunction with an already existing commercial structure, correct?
No.
That's the way the rules are written now.
Right.
The temporary measures would allow a food truck to be on a vacant piece of property until these temporary measures expire.
I got you. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay.
So that was one of my three points I just want to confirm. It's not at all a challenge. It was the existence on the site of an existing restaurant. We are waiving that temporarily. Parking requirements are subject to some discretion as I'm reading through this.
Right.
And restrooms maintain, we still require the provision of restaurants, restrooms, excuse me, and the portable toilets may be used for that purpose.
Got you. Yep, that's what I understand. Just want to be clear. Anyone else have any concern?
One last thing, Mr. Chairman. This is new, and as with all things COVID-related, we're going to be moving forward, and there will be likely glitches down the road, and as we encounter those, we'll come back to you. This may require some modifications, some change, whatever, either to help the restaurants or if problems occur to firm up some of the rules to prevent those kind of problems. So just be aware, this may or may not be the final product because we don't know what to expect yet because we haven't seen what the governor is going to do.
Right. Okay.
Bobby, in that regard, just, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but in that regard, do we need to make a provision with this motion that, because if the governor comes out at an odd time, he don't do that kind of in cycle with our meetings, but if, rather than, if he comes out with a provision or a new designation that is favorable so that we don't have to wait two weeks or some length of time to have a meeting, can we make, can we give that authority to you and to planning director to go ahead and make that so?
I hate to give you the lawyer answer that it depends, but there's a debate out there. This is a zoning ordinance and therefore requires legislative action, and you're the only ones that can take legislative action. So I'm not sure you can delegate that to us. On the other hand, we're also in a state of emergency, which allows, under the state of emergency, the chairman to do certain things that ordinarily you would do as a board. I don't know the answer to this question, but I know that some of the towns are taking the position that they can handle this issue under the emergency powers and have it worried about trying to go through and do this with the legislative function of the whole board. Because we had time, we took the approach, let's go ahead and do it, then there's no question about what we've done and whether we've done it legally or not, and so that's what we've done. If an issue arises, depending on what it is, then we have some leeway anyway to figure it out, and if it's a big enough issue, we can always call you back in. I don't know how you, I'm a little uncomfortable you saying, hey, here's the ordinance we adopted, but you all do what you want to with it if a problem arises.
Well, I wasn't thinking of it so much as a problem. I was thinking of it that if the governor comes down from Raleigh and makes a more favorable revision to the rules as they are, and we're two weeks away from them, you know, it's just after one of our meetings, and rather than have the restaurants wait for two weeks to be able for us to meet and enact those looser restrictions is what I was trying to get at, but tell me if that's necessary or not.
If he was to just open up the restaurants straight up, then this would be unnecessary.
Yeah.
Right. You know, I think we've used, we've kind of used a worst case and used a 50% capacity. Isn't that correct, Donna, whether she's still on or not?
Yes, sir.
A 50% capacity for our planning purposes and thinking that it would be unlikely that at least on day one, he would open them up to more than 50% capacity. So if he did, then that helps them. The negative of this is if he did it less, if he opened them up at 25% capacity, then I'm not sure how that affects the parking and some of the things that we've gotten in here because that would mean more, 25% more outdoor space being used than we would have anticipated.
Right.
But, so we'll just have to see.
So the suggestion then is that if something like that happens, we just get called back in on a special meeting?
We'll deal with it, yes, sir.
Deal with it.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I do have one thing. On the portable bathrooms, my only concern is there's no way to wash your hands, so I think maybe we should add, put some hand sanitizer, require hand sanitizer to be available too if there's no ability to wash your hands.
Commissioner Tobin?
Yes.
If I could add something there, I think it's highly unlikely that anyone will choose to use the portable toilets, but I wanted to put that language in there in case someone came up with that question to me and that I had it in the temporary measure so I wouldn't have to come back to the board and ask for direction.
Understood. Got you. Okay. Anything, anyone else? Then what's a pleasure of the board? Those in favor of the motion signify? Do you have something?
No, sir, I'm ready.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Somebody, would clerk get Mr. Bateman?
Oh, yeah. I'll get it.
How's everybody so nice? Okay, County Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item four on the agenda is the presentation of the manager's fiscal year 2021 budget. This is a formality that we do every year to read into the record the manager's budget message. I know this is dry and long, and I apologize, but it's one of those things that you have to do as a part of the budget process, and so we'll try to get you through it, and please stop me as we go through, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have. What's before you is what we discussed, what you've already seen. We sent you out the message ahead of time, so you've seen what I'm about to tell you, and some of you have called, and I've answered questions, and so, but if you have others, then we'll address them, and Dave and I can do that today as well. One thing has changed on our timing. When we met last, we said that because we were doing remote meetings, you had to have a 25, or 24-hour public hearing deadline after the meeting, so it would require two meetings to adopt it. Since then, the school government has come back and said, no, that's not correct, that a remote meeting means that you have one or more commissioners that are participating remotely. If all the commissioners are in the building, then it's not a remote meeting. And even though you have public comment online or however, it isn't a, doesn't require that 24 hours. So tonight, when we complete this, if you're satisfied to move forward, you can set the public hearing for our June 1st, and then on June 1st, if you chose to, you could adopt it as well. If you had enough public comment or you wanted to change it for whatever reason, then you could wait and not adopt it until the second meeting in June. But we don't have to wait that 24 hours that we talked about at the budget workshop. With all that said, I'll present to you the recommended Dare County budget for fiscal year 2020-21 in the amount of $159,384,999, with the general fund at $107,765,589 of that amount. The budget is balanced and is in compliance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act and is aligned with the priorities and the direction given by the Board of Commissioners. Note that the fiscal year '21 and '20 general fund budgets are lower than fiscal year 2019 due to the implementation of the capital investment fund for fiscal years 2020 and 2021, and it's reduced further by the effects of the COVID-19. Fiscal year '21 budget is developed incorporating the expected negative revenue impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic and from business limitations in the resulting economic recession. The purpose of the county's annual budget process is to develop a fiscally responsible plan that enables the county to accomplish priorities established by the board. At prior retreats, the board provided the following strategic focus areas. Long-term financial planning and capital, which means expand the capital planning and stabilize available funding through the establishment of a capital investment fund, and a long-term capital planning and debt affordability model. Next was economic development. Continue the beach nourishment efforts, address the demand for future projects, and determine additional project prioritization criteria utilizing a rewrite of the beach nourishment and debt affordability model. Continue efforts towards the affordable and workforce housing through zoning and planning changes and a project with the Development Finance Initiative of the UNC School of Government. Next on the focus areas was education. Continue the partnership with Dare County schools using agreed-upon formula for current local expense and the capital investment fund to adequately address future capital needs. Expand the College of the Albemarle campus through a new capital project and the establishment of a local scholarship fund. Next was human resources, and it was to continue to follow the recommendations of the salary study which was implemented in 2018 and 2019. Next was to maintain all county service levels. Next was to maintain the level of property taxes during The budget is balanced and is in compliance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act and is aligned with the priorities and the direction given by the Board of Commissioners. Note that the fiscal year '21 and '20 general fund budgets are lower than fiscal year 2019 due to the implementation of the capital investment fund for fiscal years 2020 and 2021, and it's reduced further by the effects of the COVID-19. Fiscal year '21 budget is developed incorporating the expected negative revenue impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic and from business limitations and the resulting economic recession. The purpose of the county's annual budget process is to develop a fiscally responsible plan that enables the county to accomplish priorities established by the board. At prior retreats, the board provided the following strategic focus areas. Long-term financial planning and capital, which means expand the capital planning and stabilize available funding through the establishment of a capital investment fund and a long-term capital planning and debt affordability model. Next was economic development. Continue the beach nourishment efforts, address the demand for future projects, and determine additional project prioritization criteria utilizing a rewrite of the beach nourishment and debt affordability model. Continue efforts towards the affordable and workforce housing through zoning and planning changes and a project with the development finance initiative of the UNC School of Government. Next on the focus areas was education. Continue the partnership with Dare County Schools using agreed-upon formula for current local expense and the capital investment fund to adequately address future capital needs. Expand the College of the Albemarle campus through a new capital project and the establishment of a local scholarship fund. Next was human resources, and it was to continue to follow the recommendations of the salary study which was implemented in 2018 and 2019. Next was to maintain all county service levels. Next was to maintain the level of property taxes during the revaluation years by using a revenue-neutral rate. And finally, to maintain the unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 21% of the general fund revenues. Notwithstanding the revenue decreases resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, the 2021 budget is able to accomplish all but two of those priorities. After staff discussions with the Dare County Schools, they requested the same level of funding after it was evident that the requirements of the funding formula could not be met this year. Recommendations in the 2018 salary study are also not met as the budget does not include mayor or COLA funds for county employees. So let's look at the budget. The recommended budget includes no property tax rate increase. We are using the revenue-neutral rate. This preserves the high quality of service and delivery to the citizens, the property owners, and the visitors, and meets as many of the goals as the funding constraints by the effects of COVID-19. When I say no tax increase, it's also actually a tax rate reduction from our 47 cent to 40.05 cent. So it's right at a seven cent reduction in the rate to get us to that revenue-neutral rate. Comparison of the fiscal years '20 and '21 totals to those of prior years must consider the creation of the capital investment fund in 2019. Due to the expected effects on revenues from COVID-19, business limitations, and the resulting recession, the total budget decreased by 5.59%, almost 5.6% decrease, and the general fund budget decreased by 1.5 cent. The following table shows the original 2019 budget and the original 2020 budget, the requested 2021 budget, and the manager's 2021 budget. One of the items that's on the slide there, I think it's special revenue funds, there were some questions about the special revenue funds, what they were, and the special revenue funds consist of the CND landfill, the E911 fund, the beach nourishment fund, and restricted ABC funds, sanitation funds, inlet maintenance, donations, capital reserve, and disaster recovery. And those are essentially the things that are covered in the general fund. So when we build a budget, we start with the requested budget, and that's the request from the department heads of what they need to operate their departments in the coming year. After budget requests were submitted by departments and the outside agencies, the requested expenditures, the requested expenditures exceeded projection revenues, creating a general fund deficit of $4.986 million. So expenditures increased plus revenue decreases came to that almost $5 million deficit. The driving factors of that deficit were on the expenditure side, 1.9 million requests for emergency medical services, $552,000 requests by the health department, $400,000 requests by the sheriff's department, $372,000 request increased by information technology, almost 220,000 requests by the grants and waterways, and a $216,000 request from social services. In addition to those expenditure requests, there was a revenue decrease of $1.9 million from fiscal year '20 after adjusting for appropriated fund balance, and all from the, these were from the expected effects of the COVID-19. The recommended budget does not include a property tax increase and uses the revenue-neutral tax rate of 40.05 cent, down from 47 cents due to revaluation. The revenue-neutral rate is calculated pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute, Section 159-11E, and uses an annual growth rate in the tax base since the last evaluation of 1.0767% and a 5% reserve for value reductions from appeals. The manager's budget reduces the current year allocation rate, I'm sorry, the current year collection rate to 98.5% from the 99.5.1% from previous years. And this is due to the expected recessionary effects from the COVID-19 pandemic. Budget requests were submitted at the end of February after the extent of the COVID-19 pandemic effects became clear. The manager instructed the department heads to resubmit their budget requests to eliminate new requests and make any reductions that would not result in reduced service levels. Department heads reduced new requests by $3.4 million. The manager made further reductions to new requests to existing budgets of $212,000 and reduced the transfer to the capital fund of $1.9 million. There were increases in budget line items were only for mandated things that could not be avoided. These included $257,756 for a projected 5% increase in the health plan, $208,000 for the sheriff's department to correct and classify sworn law enforcement officers per FLSA to 171 hours per 28-day pay period, $36,000 in elections for voting equipment, $55,000 in information technology for security services and technology support, and $66,100 in courts for a security system update and improvements. If you've looked at all the things I just talked about, from the expenditures to the requests to the recommended budgets to the things that I just said we increased the cost for, they're not going to add up to the 500 and whatever, or the five-point, whatever million that it comes out to. And the reason for that, there are maybe 100 other small items throughout the budget that change that number insignificantly in any line item, but probably by $4,000 or $5,000 difference. So anybody that's going through trying to make all those numbers jive to the penny, everything that affects that number is not in it because it was just too lengthy to include those little $1,000 here, $2,000 there items in it, but that they are in the budget that you have in front of you. Next, we'll take a look at the revenues. Prior to the effects of COVID-19, the results of the 2020 to date were similar to 2019. Current year property tax collections are up to, were up to 99.5%. Through January, the local A39 sales tax was up 5.5%. The statewide A40 sales tax was up 7.87%. And oxy tax through February was up 2.78% even with the effects of Hurricane Dorian. Through the end of March, registered deeds revenues were up 14.3% and the land transfer tax into the capital improvement investment fund was up 13.7%. The worst revenue effects from COVID-19 are expected in 2020, especially in April and May. Those were, the local A39 and A42 sales tax are estimated to end about $1 million less than 2019, a 7% annual decrease after a June quarter decrease of 30%. The statewide A40 sales tax is estimated to end $64,000 less than 2019, a 3% annual decrease after a June quarter decrease of 25%. And oxy tax is estimated to end $1 million less than 2019, a 20% annual decrease. And finally, land transfer tax into the capital investment fund is estimated to end $198,000 less than 2019, which is a 4% annual decrease. The receipt of federal grants for COVID-19 will assist with 2020 and '21. To date, the county has received $67,354 CDC grant for the health department cost, a CARES Act Medicare grant of $235,986 for lost revenues and costs, and a COVID-19 state relief fund, these are federal funds granted, of $852,149 for costs that we expect from now through December 30th.
Quick question on the previous slide on the shortfalls, 2020 versus budget, where we now have the COVID-19 impacts. You illuminated, or illustrated them on the A39 sales tax, A40. A39 and occupancy were the largest of the two, and combining them all, it's roughly about a two, and I should have asked this question earlier, Bobby, I apologize, is about a $2 million impact as shown on the slide? That's affecting 2020, fiscal 2020. Are we able to cover that with reduced spending and/or general fund balance to basically sort of cushion that into the end of fiscal year? I'm kind of looking at Dave nodding.
The answer is yes, both.
Both.
Yeah. Which is why we restricted spending.
Yeah.
Right as it started, just to anticipate those effects.
It seemed that that's what we're doing, disconfirm. Thank you.
Okay. Revenue assumptions for 2021. Our assumptions are that the property tax base, or it's not an assumption, that the property tax base was revalued as of January 1st, '20 and increased to a taxable value of $16.147 billion. Projected revenue is $63,702,983 using the revenue-neutral rate of 40.05 cents and a reduced collection rate of 98.5%. Sales taxes, the local A39 and 42 taxes are projected with a 10% decrease for the September quarter, a 2.5% decrease for the December quarter, and a 1% decrease thereafter. The statewide A40 tax is projected at the same except for the September quarter at a 9% decrease. And the oxy tax decreases for the key seasonal months of July, August, and September are projected at 30%, 20%, and 10% respectively. The next slide is the average county property tax rates for 2019. The slide to the left is the property tax rate in cents. That's last year's rate at 47 cent. They haven't done the calculations yet for the upcoming rates because nobody knows what the final rates are going to be for the coming budget. But if you take our 47 cents and move it to 40 cents, we go from being the eighth to the one, two, three, four, to the sixth lowest in the state. Over on the right-hand side is the effective property tax rate in cents, and that's from 2019. That's the last time that they calculated it. And you can see that our effective rate is 42%. And that's when you, you take into account the sales-to-assessment ratio, and when you do that, you're creating an apples-to-apples comparison so that you can compare counties' tax rates and their effective rates. And when you look at that one, we're the sixth lowest. I wouldn't expect a lot of change in that next year, but over time, as our values increase, then we should be getting lower and lower in our effective tax rate in the years to come.
Bobby, on that slide, you said to the left represented 47, and we're at 40.5. Why is that showing 42 on that slide to the right?
Because that's the last time they calculated, it was last year.
Okay, I missed.
Yeah, it was a 2019 number.
Got you, okay.
Okay.
If I could, on that very same slide, I was just looking at Clay County because in our instance, Bobby and I had talked earlier, and he had explained to me how this worked. In our situation, the 47 cent actual rate, because of the increased property values, the 47 cents is on the assessed value of property versus the current sales activity brings it down. And if you look at Clay from the left-hand side chart to the right-hand side, it's actually the opposite, which would imply property values in Clay County actually would have declined a little bit, and they were being assessed at a value slightly above the actual sales level. Just trying to, I was working on this chart too earlier. Thank you.
What's the next slide, Dave?
General fund revenues.
Yeah. So this is the percent change in sales taxes. This is not revenue. This is the percent change in growth. So when you see those spikes up or down, it doesn't mean that's necessary revenue. It's trying to measure the rate of change. The big spike that you see in 2018 was the General Assembly expanded what was taxed, and so everybody got a one-time shot. That didn't recur in the subsequent years, and so the growth rate went down, and that's why you have the low growth rate in the years that follow. And then as we go up from the end of 2019 to now, then we start growing again going forward up until today. We don't know what's going to happen, but we've got projections through today. Is there another slide? Yeah. And then, so the next slide, that's revenue there. That is actual revenue, and you can see that over time, our actual revenues have grown, and they had a little dip, but they're on an upward trajectory from our sales tax from 2010 to current. And we'll, again, we're projecting a dip for next year, and then we'll see what happens after that. All right. So I'll move on now to the fund balance appropriation and projected fund balance. The 2021 appropriated fund balance of $2,992,000 is within the board-adopted policy of 3% or less of expenditures. 2019 fund balance ended the year at $40,617,000 unassigned fund balance, and the unassigned fund balance ended the year at $29,555,000, which was $5,448,000 over the board policy of 21% of the general fund revenues. During 2020, $3.4 million was moved to the capital investment fund, $413 was moved to the disaster recovery fund, $205,65,000 was moved to the capital projects fund. The unassigned fund balance remaining was 22.2% of revenues or $1.397 million over the target policy of 21%. Of that amount, $589,000 is projected to be used during 2020, leaving $808,000 for use in 2021, which equals the increase in the appropriated fund balance from '20 to '21. If projections are correct, our ending unassigned fund balance at the end of '21 will be approximately 21% of revenues. So we talked about revenues. Now let's move to expenditures. On our expenditures, first is personnel. Our health insurance plan has a 5% projected increase for 2021 at a cost of $257,756. The county continues to promote its wellness program and has expanded hours and coverage for its partnership with the Outer Banks Hospital for the employees' wellness and health clinic. No changes were made to the health plan, copays, or deductibles. Employees will continue to have dual plan options, choosing between the traditional plan or a high deductible health savings plan with the first $750 of cost funded by the plan. Position changes, there are no new positions in the 2021 budget. In the information section of the budget, you can see places where we've moved positions around, but there's no increase in positions or changes there. Employee and compensation, the board implemented a salary study prepared by Springsteen during 2018 and 2019. 2020 continued the recommendations of that study by including merit pay and a cost-of-living pay adjustment. However, due to the economic effects of COVID-19, no merit pay and no cost-of-living adjustment is included in the 2021 recommended budget. However, we can revisit this and other budget items in the late fall if our revenues exceed our projections, and it's prudent to do that. For capital, of the $2,124,000 requested capital outlay, only $22,000 is recommended for network intrusion software for information technology.
Bobby, I hate to interrupt.
Sure.
Can we go back to the previous slide? On the compensation bit, when we did the salary study, you know, we talked about keeping up with COLA and, COLA in particular, so that we wouldn't get ourselves back into a position of where we were before concerning the budget and salary and compensation. What's the word I'm looking for?
Compression.
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't get the word out. Will, will this have any effect on this move in 2020 that will put us back looking at a problem with compression again?
It could. So when you give your COLA, you're trying to keep everybody on the same economic footing they were on the year before. And so if the price of a loaf of bread goes up 1%, that's your cost of the living index, then to get a, you need to get a 1% raise to get the same loaf of bread or the same that you were last year, or else expenses are going up and your revenues are going down. And so you give a COLA, each time you give a COLA, you move the whole wage scale up to to current levels, which keeps you theoretically on the same plane with other entities that you're hiring against. Compression comes when you haven't given COLAs and your base rate is low, and so to get new people, you have to hire them at a higher rate than your step and grade system allows, and you have somebody that you've hired new that's been there a year that's making the same thing as somebody who's been there 10 years, because you had to hire at a rate higher than you normally would, because you didn't give COLAs to get the grades up. So each year that you don't get a COLA, then you're creating that problem. And when you do it over five or seven years, you get, as we know, about a $4 million problem. So, so yeah, it's something that in next year's budget, we're going to have to take a look at and address and decide how we're going to handle it, because it, it can create that problem if we let it go too long.
Okay, good, and that's, that's what I thought, but once again, if, if things are looking good in the fall, perhaps we, we can readdress it.
Next is insurance. This is not health insurance, this is our other insurances, and we had a decrease of $168,543 across applicable departments for various insurance policy rate decreases. Dare County schools, funding the schools at the local current expense remained with outcuts from the 2020 levels, but it does not include increases in funding to the Board of Elections, Board of Elections, Board of Education. Once the economic effects of the COVID-19 became evident, and after the staff, and after staff discussions between us, our staff, and the school board staff, Dare County Schools requested the same amount of funding for 2020, in, same amount of funding in '21 as they did in 2020. Using the school funding formula agreed on in 2016, that would have, if we had followed the formula, it would have resulted in an increase of $653,000. So again, the budget wasn't cut, but it wasn't increased by the form, the formula amount of $653,000. Local funding for school operating costs remained at $24,476,088, which is composed of $23,230,000 for local current expense, and 1.245 million for county-employed school nurses and school resource officers. Pupil enrollments and projections are, the NCDPI projection for the fall of 2019 was 5,172 students. The actual number for the fall of 2019 was 5,278, and the NCDPI projection for the fall of 2020 is 5,296. For the last 11 years, 2011 through 2021, local current expense funding, excluding school nurses and resource officers, and the five-year annual deferred maintenance funding in 2015 through '19, has increased by 23.08 cents from $18,873,000 to $23,230,000. And over the same period of time, pupils have increased 9.46% from 4,838 students to 5,296 students. Is the per pupil formula on the, on the slide, Dave, or is that not on? Yeah, okay. In your packet, there's the per pupil formula. If you look at 2021, it appears that our per pupil number has gone down from the previous year, and that's true. That's because we, we had a slight increase in the number of pupils, and we did not raise the amount of money that we're giving to schools. And so when you do the math, it makes that per pupil formula come down a, a little bit from 4,401 to 4,386 per pupil. Next, we look at our departments in elections. $14,000 is included for voting equipment rental, and $22,000 is included for the replacement of laptops. In information technology, $25,000 is included for additional network security services and training, and $15,000 is included for additional alerta software related to staff security, and $15,000 is included for additional software and device maintenances. In the sheriff's department, there's $208,152 included to correctly classify sworn officers per the Fair Labor Standards Act to a 171-hour per 28-day pay period. In the College of the Albemarle, the budget remains $250,000 for local scholarships to the College of the Albemarle that maintains, and that maintains a board priority. The scholarships are for the Dare County graduating seniors who wish to attend the College of the Albemarle. In the courts, there was $66,100 included for a security system update and security improvements at the courthouse. And then to transfer to other funds, there's $210,000 of funds maintained to be transferred to the inlet, maintenance fund for Hatters Inlet. This will maintain the annual amount available from the county's share of the work at $250,000. Reductions to capital outlays have previously been discussed. Similar reductions to the capital improvement plan have been made in order to allow for a temporary reduction of the transfer from the general fund to the capital investment fund from $10,426,000 to $8,478,000. And then on the next slide, you have a pie chart that shows how the money that we spend in our budgets are broken down. And when you look at that, the number one thing that we spend money on is public safety. The second largest item is schools, and the third is human resources and, on the people. So it's public safety, schools, and people that we spend the bulk of our budget on. Next, we'll look at the capital investment fund and the capital improvement plan. The recommended 2020 budget included a significant change in budget structure by implementing a capital investment fund. The capital investment fund is a separately budgeted part of the general fund. For financial reporting purposes, the capital investment fund is consolidated into the general fund in the KFOR audit report, along with the disaster recovery and Leosa funds. And in, in your information section, you look at our fund structure in the budget for further explanation. In conjunction with the establishment of a capital improvement fund, the county and its financial advisors, DEC associates, developed a capital planning and debt affordability model. Use of a capital investment fund separates budgeting for operations from that from capital. With the 2020 budget, the general fund, which is Fund 10, budgeted for operations, and the capital improvement fund, which is Fund 11, budgeted for debt service, capital outlay, and the county's capital improvements plan. The general fund's contribution to the capital investment fund was set at the 2019 net general fund cost for debt service and the capital outlays of $10,426,000 was reduced to $8,478,000 for 2021. Model development was completed and approved by the board, along with the 2020 capital improvements plan. The model also includes plans for major items like roof, roof replacements, heating and air conditioning replacements, major equipment replacements, and major maintenance with a Dare mid-flight Airbus helicopter. The 2021 through 2025 capital improvement plans. The 2021 through 2025 recommended CIP is shown in the capital improvement plans in the information section. Due to expected revenue reductions from the land transfer tax and the restricted portions of the sales tax, 2021 projections are recommended at bare minimums, and 2022 projections are approximately 75% of what would be considered a normal year. The CIP and the debt affordability model were updated to maintain the board priority of committed and started projects to be included in the planned Series 2020B limited obligation bonds. These were the College of the Albemarle, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the new animal shelter project for which construction has begun. The limited funding projects recommended for 2021 are $150,000 for local capital outlay for Dare County Schools, $145,000 for the Dare County Schools CIP for a HVAC chiller replacement, $22,000 capital outlay for information technology, $257,000 for the county CIP, consisting of $196,000 for construction and repairs to the solid waste transfer station, and $60,000 to rebuild a sewer lift station at the College of the Albemarle, and then finally, $9,579 for a county HVAC replacement. It is also recommended that $1 million be added to the Plan 2020 LOBS debt issuance for a Dare County School roof replacement in Mania. The sections of the roof to be replaced were last done in 1988 and in 1998, in 1988 and 1998, and they're in dire need of work. The CIP moves the Plan 2020 debt issuance for EMS facilities to 2023, moves the Plan 2024 debt issuance for a new public works facility to 2025. The board has approved a policy for capital investment funds and, and debt affordability model of maintaining an ending fund balance of not less than .33 times annual debt service with a target of .5. The recommended 21 through 25 CIP is projected to result in the following coverage, these of annual debt service and ending fund balances. And when you look at that, we're at our target of .5, except in the first year, and that's at .332, which is a tenth of a percent less. I will remind you, just for some comparison's sake, that after 2008, that coverage ratio was zero. So even at 32, we're much better off than we've been in other significant recessions. Yes, sir?
Right on, on that one, on 2021. My only question on it was, it appears to be a fairly solid pair of numbers there in terms of debt service, we're pretty sure we know that, and the ending fund balance would be based upon our committed and known spending, so that looks pretty solid. In other words, I'm just asking, do you think there's much sway in those two, or are they pretty solidly, unlike, say, revenues or sales tax in the future, which we have really a tough time predicting, especially with what's going on? These two numbers look pretty solid, so that the percentage looked pretty solid.
Well, the, the debt numbers are solid, because once, obviously, once you borrow it, you borrow it, so.
Yep, so the debt service is fixed.
Yeah, unless, again, the only thing I can say is less, unless between now and the time that we decided to issue the debt, something happened that made the economic forecast look worse or more than we could afford, we could always choose not to issue the debt, which would then postpone whatever it is we have.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, if we issue the debt as planned, this is a pretty solid, what I'm driving at is, this is unlikely to be a coverage of .22 or a coverage of .42. We're pretty solid at .32.
Well, yes, with, the answer could be, if land transfers tank to zero, then you've got a significant part of your revenue that creates your coverage that goes away, and that would change your coverage requirement.
But the total land transfer tax on an annual basis is a couple of million dollars, I think? Three or four that we end up with?
County share.
County share is like three or four? Three? Okay, so if, and again, what I saw in the previous slides, that looked like a fairly solid number and.
Well, if you, if you had an ending fund balance in 2021, and our land transfer tax went to zero, then you'd cut that in half. And so if you cut that in half, your .32 is going to go down.
Okay, well, you're helping me then. I don't think land transfer tax is a highly vol, I'm trying to get at, are there highly volatile assumptions in there? It didn't look like it to me. It looked like a pretty stable set of assumptions, so I didn't expect a, a wide swing in the .32 coverage.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, our other funds, our disaster recovery fund, as we call it, our fund number 12. Beginning with 2020, the disaster recovery fund is a separately budgeted part of the general fund. It budgets for software disaster recovery services at $100,000 for the initial responses to any emergency. During 2020, $413,000 was transferred from the general fund to meet the board's new policy of an ending disaster fund recovery total fund balance of 1% of the general fund budget. Next is the E911 fund. E911 board funding will restart with 2020 after a state mandated reduction of fund balance in 2020. What that means is, when we consolidated our E911 with Terrell and Hyde County, everybody had a fund balance. And what the state had done, we had, David worked hard, and our folks had worked hard to create a large fund balance for Dare even before we consolidated. And we had it for our rainy day fund for when we had to buy a new tower or do something with. Well, the E911 board in Raleigh said you couldn't do that any longer. You can't create fund balances, and so you had to spin down your fund balance before they would give you any new funds on whatever their eligible expenses are. And so for the last several years, our fund balance, coupled with the consolidated fund balances from Dare and Hyde, we've been spending those down. And next year, we will have spent them down to the level that they approve of, and they'll start giving us an annual allocation. Our issue is, they've never given us an annual allocation based on the consolidated E911s. We've had discussions with them and met with them several times to talk about how that would be done, because we won't have a five-year rolling average or whatever, and they told us not to worry, they're going to take care of it. And so I, I say all that, because when we go forward, we're going to have to make sure they.
Checks and.
Take care of it.
Exactly.
Because it'll be, it'll be a new, it'll be the first time they've done it since we consolidated. Next is our beach nourishment fund. The beach nourishment fund is, is set per the beach nourishment financial model. 2021 includes $144,000 for sand fencing projects, $600,000 of debt service support for Naxhead, when combined with the remaining amounts from the related capital project budget, 1.4 million of debt service to support Duck, Kitty Hawk, and Kill Devil Hills, 7.2 million of county debt service payments for debt issued for projects in Buxton, Naxhead, Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, and Duck. Next is the sanitation fund. The sanitation fund's property tax rate is also set at the revenue neutral rate of 8.86 cents. 2021 appropriates fund balance of $185,000 to balance the budget, and an ending fund balance at June 30th is projected to be $2 million, around $2 million, or 36% of the expenditures. The fund balance is expected to reach around 20% of expenditures at the end of 2023. Therefore, the '24 budget, the tax rate will have to be adjusted, or, or significant service level reductions will have to occur. What all that means is, is that, just as we had done in E911, we had created a large fund balance, more fund balance than we needed in the sanitation fund. And that's been going on for several years, and we, each year I stand before you and I say this, that we're going to be spending some of that fund balance to avoid having to increase rates. And the goal we're trying to get the fund balance to is to 20%. And so by our current projections, that will occur with our 2024 budget, so we can use fund balance for another year to, to get to pay down without having to increase rates. But at some point, our, our cost to dispose of our trash exceeds our rates, and we're going to have to get those rates realigned. We've been running some numbers about what would happen if we didn't do it all at once. We did it incrementally, and, and next year, when we talk in budget, we'll talk about doing that. We'll tell you how much we can afford to do, what it would mean to the taxpayer, all those kind of things. Because I don't think we want to go in, in one year and raise it two or three cents, if we can raise it a little bit at a time going forward. But that's a discussion that we've got to have. But again, I want to make you aware that we are running this and paying some of those costs, subsidizing this out of the fund balance. The rate won't cover the expenses as we speak today. In the water fund, the water rate model for 2021 hasn't been completed, and while the effects of COVID-19 are being determined and incorporated, 2021 will have no rate increase after a 5% rate increase for 2020. Per, per the state requirements, system development fees, formerly called impact fees, are budgeted in a separate water capital reserve fund. Our internal funds, the county maintains two internal service funds, that's the insurance fund and the, and the fleet maintenance fund, and adopts financial plans for each of those. Our insurance fund is projected to end 2020 with revenues greater than expenditures. That results in the fund's recovery from the significant losses in 2008, '09, and '13. As discussed under the general fund, the health plan has a projected increase of, for 2021 of 5%. Fleet maintenance fund in 2021 includes 6,000 capital outlay for an air conditioning service machine. And in conclusion, the board is asked to hold a public hearing, a public meeting on, a public hearing on the budget during the board meeting on June 1st. The board may schedule additional workshops after that, or, or adopt the budget at any time after that public hearing. The budget and the revenue performance will be reexamined mid-year. If revenue performance is better than projected, the possibility of accomplishing some of the requested but not funding items will be presented to the board at that time for I want to thank you all for your help, guidance, and assistance in giving us clear goals, because that makes our job so much easier when we know where you're headed, and for working with us through this and our workshops, and individually with your questions, so that when we get here today, we've worked out all the kinks and the things that you all were interested in and that you not had questions about. So again, thank you for your help and your input. And Dave and I are here for any questions that you might have.
Good job, Bobby.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Bobby? With the.
Anybody have any questions about the, with the budget that was presented?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Couch.
On the 5% increase on the health plans, I seem to remember we had an increase last year, I guess.
No, that's going to have to be a reality, dealing with increases each year, each budget for our health plan.
What we're told from our consultants is that health and cost, as you know, are going up. We're seeing 5%, he's seeing 10, 12, 8, 19, I mean, all kinds of numbers in other places. When you have, the cost of living index alone is, you know, 2% or 3%, then 5% is probably a fair increase for what we're doing. And it means that our health plans, our wellness plans, our clinic, the things we're doing are helping us stabilize those rates. Our health insurance fund is, is solid. We have the, the funding to take care of that. And so we've come out of that $4 million deficit. It took us a while, but we're on solid footing now. Now, now that I say that, I knock on wood, but, you know, it doesn't take two or three people having cancer or a heart transplant or something, and all of a sudden, we're back down trying to figure out what we're going to do with our rates. So keep our fingers crossed that people stay healthy and they're doing the things that we're asking them to do and they have. Our employees have done a fabulous job, and it reflects in our rates.
Thank you.
Being in that business, Danny, 5% is unheard of. It's very, very conservative. We're very fortunate, very fortunate. Anyone else?
I'd like to make the motion to set a public hearing for June 1st, 2020, instruct the clerk of the board to publish a notice.
Okay.
A motion's been made to set a public hearing by Commissioner House and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you again, Bobby, Dave, great work.
Next is the consent agenda. Again, as in the past, if there's anything on the consent agenda anyone would like to discuss, say so, we can pull it off and pass the rest of the consent agenda, then come back to that item. If not, then a motion's in order.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, that is in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And that'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item six, Commissioner's business and Manager's business. I would like to ask Commissioner Couch if he would start that off this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Put in quite a few miles over the weekend just trying to gauge what kind of visitorship we were having down on Hatteras. And overall, I was pleased with the first week of, first weekend of people coming down to the island, down to the lower banks, and it was pretty significant. And, I mean, it's understandable, over the past two and a half months, people have been locked up. But people just want to get out of the house and get on the beach. And I was pleased to, to see that. Did see enough social distancing and mask wearing, although it wasn't 100% perfection. It was satisfiable, satisfactory, excuse me. And in some of my conversations with people, they likened it, this initial opening up to, to Memorial Day weekends in the past. So maybe we can get a double bang for our buck with Memorial Day coming up. And Bob and the board, I know going first here, I'm probably stepping on some of your remarks, but I, I did want to comment on the loss of the young mother and her child in Kill Devil Hills. That was just absolutely crushing. And it's an Outer Banks loss. It's not just specific to Kill Devil Hills, but that mother and that child was a third grader at Nags Head Elementary, excuse me a minute. It's a big loss. It's tough. That's all, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Commissioner Bateman?
Yeah, and Danny, I'm, I'm with you on that. That's, that was really very tragic and terrible. The lady's, Revan Rachel's and her son Sebastian.
Sebby, yep.
It's just terrible. Anyway, hats off to the EMS, as you alluded to, the great job that they do for the county. And we salute them for all their work, as well as all the county employees who are out there, you know, fighting. And Mr. Manager, I would tell you this, and our finance director, I've worked for a lot of, along with a lot of town managers and, and business folks. And the, the way that you present the budget was done very, very professional. I'm not the most astute individual when it comes to numbers, but it was presented in a way that, that I understood it. And every question that was ever came up, I, I felt very comfortable with it. And, and that's very important. So you guys did a great job, as well as staff, as well as the department heads of taking a situation that was really, really bad and throwing on us as they, they were already ready to go with a previous budget and then have to readjust everything in a short period of time. So you guys did a really, really good job, and it's a pleasure. That's about it, that's all I got. Thank you. Oh, well, I'll say this, the social distancing and the mask thing, you know, we're doing what we can as individuals, and we all need to protect ourselves. Some of our patrons and some of the folks from other areas, they're not as excited about wearing the mask as we are. I'm just going to let you all know, so don't get your feelings hurt. They're not necessarily on the same page we are. But they're all being polite.
Sanctuary.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to the board to allow the county manager to use any excess funds above the cost of recovery court expenses from the recovery court line item for use in the county for opioid mitigation, education, prevention, or treatment.
I'll second. Okay, motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman, and is seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for some discussion.
I, I have no objection, I just couldn't quite hear what you said. Would you do that first part again, excess funds from?
Basically, basically, Rob, it's, it's a motion to allow county manager to use excess funds that are not needed for recovery court, because that's.
Oh, recovery court, sorry, that's part of this.
That's right, yeah.
I missed that too.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I didn't say it real clear.
Any, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you all a lot. I would also like to welcome visitors back to Dare County and to remind them that we still have common sense mitigation recommendations that really should be followed. Please socially distance properly and wear masks in areas and businesses that are highly populated and where you're subject to being around people outside of your family or group. Please remember that we are still on the steep side of the learning curve with COVID-19, and mitigation efforts are still essential. Also, Bobby, Dave, and all department heads, thank you for a well-done budget. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reiterate, I want to thank our Dare County EMS staff and also to dedicate them for their, their services and throughout EMS week, this week. And they, they continue to do an outstanding service as we hear from countless emails that we get from, from people, like the chairman has said, of people who've used the service. And with, with myself being involved in EMS for a good number of years, not just here in Dare County, but also nationally, I can tell you Dare County EMS stands above many EMS systems across the nation. And my heart goes out, out to them at all times, and my thanks and honor and respect. Also, last week was National Law Enforcement Memorial Day. And those were shared widely throughout, throughout the nation of our law enforcement officers that have passed in the line of duty, not only nationwide, statewide, but also our local law enforcement officers were honored as well. On the commercial fishing front, under the Federal COVID-19 Act that was passed, I got in touch with Senator Tillis's office, and several million, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I had it written down. I forgot to bring that actual number with me. Good size, well up into the millions. And a good portion of that will be going to the state of North Carolina and will be filtered through DEQ and the National, I mean, the North County Fisherman's, Marine Fisheries Commission. So, and that'll be in addition to the 10 million the state has already put in. So there's going to be a, a good, a good relief fund there that will be distributed out.
County Manager?
Thank you for a well-presented and put-together budget. You and your staff, Dave, Sally, and all those who, who really put down the final touches of it, really brought it all together. And my heartfelt thank you goes out to all department leads. I know that they didn't just, being, being a past department lead myself, I know when you put a budget out and then you've got to go back and redo it, it makes it twice as hard. And I want to thank all the department heads for doing that. I know it's a kind of a, it's a tedious task, especially when you have to go back and redefine your numbers and stuff. And I, and I applaud all, all of you that have done that and has really put together a good, solid budget for us. Normally, I do a pet of the week. Unfortunately, we had a tropical storm today, so that was not being able to be filmed. But I would urge all of our Dare County residents and visitors to check out the Dare County SPCA webpage. And if you see a, a pet there that just strikes your heartstrings, just go pick them up. And they'll, they'll need a wonderful home. And our today in history was the day that Mount St. Helens in 1980 went up. And that's our history, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, sir. Just a quick follow-up with Commissioner House on seafood supply. I thought, and again, through all the flurry of emails, I thought I saw an email indicating President Trump issued an executive order to protect and defend the national seafood supply chain and would be very impactful as far as stopping excessive restrictions and regulation on commercial fishing. I think that was correct. So, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to see if you concur that I thought I saw that, and that was very good news.
Yeah, it's very good news, and it was, it's just fresh news, and we're not quite sure what all the details are involved with it, but.
But it's in the right direction.
It's in the right direction.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I will be brief. I was much more lengthy at last meeting, and I've condensed my remarks substantially.
Which you did so well last time.
Yes, thank you. On Thursday of this week, the Albemarle Commission, which I am also a member of, has completed its search for a new executive director, almost. We're down to three finalists. They will be interviewed by the board in a very unique manner. We are using the law offices of John Leidy, our attorney, and we will have the entire board broken into three different rooms, less than 10 in each room, and one candidate of the three will rotate, start with A, then B, then C. And over a period of approximately three hours, we will have an ability to interview all the candidates in a sort of round robin format, maintaining all appropriate protocols. So we're kind of looking forward to that and excited to get that search completed. I would agree, at the risk of being ridiculously redundant, thank you to Chief Collins, the EMS team, and the enormous benefit and value they bring to our community. These are just some of the best of the best, and I'm, I'm just thrilled and privileged to, to know some of these fine people. Bobby and Dave, again, thank you for your patience. I spent a bit of time on the phone earlier with the county manager, and he was very patient with me on some of my questions. And I appreciate the thorough presentation, analysis, and explanations of all changes in the budget. So thank you both very much for that. And lastly, again, I just feel like we need to call this out. Saw in the national news and local news, the incredible saving, life-saving effort that took place of two young teenage girls pulled out of a rip current by one of our own local heroes. So I don't recall all the specifics of it, but by golly, that was something to be proud of.
He saved their lives, no question. He saved their lives.
He saved them both. That's just, that's really good stuff. Thank you, sir, that completes my remarks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Question seven.
Yes, I too am going to start off with kind of a very somber part of my report. We had another tragedy in the past week here on the Outer Banks. Ryan Dodson was a tree service, owned a tree service company here. Was in his bucket, and he accidentally got, went into the power lines and got struck by 20,000 volts of power. He lost, he did lose his life after fighting for a couple of days. But Ryan was just, if any of you knew him, he's just a great guy, and really a terrible loss for our county.
Yeah, none of that, he was also a Nags Head firefighter as well.
Yes, yes, he was a Nags Head firefighter also. I'd like to say thank you to all the sheriffs also that manned all of our checkpoints. I talked with one of them out in front of Ace Hardware.
Great point, Jim, great point, yes.
And they, he, he went off duty just 15 minutes before the guy from California came in. He goes, man, I wish I'd been there. But he said it was challenging at times and a lot of, you know, got in some, some heated arguments. But for the most part, they did a fant, no, not for the most part, they did a fantastic job overall. And last but not least, I have some really big news. The dredge contract has been awarded to Conrad Shipping, or Conrad Shipbuilding. And the, I can't give you the num, specific numbers because the contract is in the attorney's office right now, and so the specific final number's not there. But I will say it came in well under what we expected. And they should come out illegal here in the next few weeks, at which point we will get the contract to look it over. And with our blessing, it'll move forward and be signed. And hopefully, that's going to all occur by mid-June is the projected timeline on it. And at that point, they'll start ordering product. And Conrad, it should be noted, is the company that built the. Merton. The curry stuck in my tongue. And so they've already got a lot of the preliminary engineering from doing that that should be transferable. So it's going to be some time savings, and it's pretty exciting.
That's great news, Jim.
Yeah, it really is.
Where are they now, though?
They have, I believe, seven different shipyards along the Gulf Coast. So they're, they're a big company. And I think one of the reasons, we had good timing because a lot of the oil service companies, with oil prices that have dropped so low, pushed back a lot of their projects on building service ships. So some of the shipyards are having slower times right now. So we were able to get some really good pricing.
That's fantastic. What, eight, still 18 to 24 months to build?
Yes, they said 18 months build.
Wow.
From June?
From when, yeah, when the contract's finished, yeah.
That's, that's great news.
Yeah, it's awesome.
And once again, hats off to you and the task force for staying, staying diligent, staying, staying with the plan and, and making it happen. This is, this, this is big, this is big, really is big.
It's exciting.
Yeah, so, great. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to our crew out here that did a fantastic job on the budget. You guys really did do good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd, I've had some great news over the weekend and then several sad stories over the weekend. This, it's, it's even tougher when it hits close to home. I know my, my oldest son is here right now with Raven's mother, spending the week with her. They were, my oldest son and Raven were very, very close, go way, way back. And he was quite devastated to hear that and let me know.
know, it's pretty sad when you lose a mother and a 13-year-old son, and then you lose a young man in his 30s, executed, I mean, electrocuted, I mean, that's just horrible news. And then, of course, the good news, the savings on the two girls, so you never know what the man upstairs has in store for you, but just, you know, pray for those two families that have lost loved ones over the past weekend. Only other thing I have is, next weekend, of course, is a big, big weekend, Memorial Day, I'll have a message going out this week. These past several months have been extremely difficult for all of us concerning the impact of the pandemic throughout the county. None of us would have ever thought that we would have to deal with anything like this in our lifetime. I want to express my gratitude to each of you for how you've stepped up to the plate to handle the county's needs in this time of uncertainty. You've gone the extra mile, and I can't thank you enough. On Memorial Day, I pray for those who courageously laid down their lives for the cause of freedom. May the example of their sacrifice inspire each and every one of us, the selfish love of our Lord and Savior. Bless the families of our fallen troops, and fill their homes and their lives with strength and peace. God bless our native land, and may she ever stand for truth and righteousness, and God bless each of you, and I hope each of you have a very happy and prosperous Memorial Day weekend. County Manager?
Yes, sir, a couple of things. With respect to Commissioner Overman's motion about the excess funds in the recovery court, what I would, what I would plan to do to use that discretion that you just gave me, would take the recommendations from the Substance Abuse Task Force, so that we know we're addressing needs that a broad-based spectrum looks at, not something that just I happen to know about or whatever, so that we'll have some guidance in how we use those funds, so that would be my plan going forward, unless you all have another way you'd like me to do that.
No, sounds good to me.
Okay. The second thing is, I appreciate you all and the comments that you made to our staff, you know, our EMS folks, you talked about it in the beginning, and you talked about it a little bit later, are unbelievable, I mean, they go through it, and they're proud of what they do, and we're proud of them, and so it's really nice when you all recognize it. Similarly with our staff, you can't know how much work that Dave and Sally and Ernie and his staff, they all put in to trying to get a budget together, and when you do that, and you talk about the work that the department heads do, and then having to do it twice in two weeks, we give them two months, and they took two months to do the first one, and then they did the second one in two weeks, and so amazing work, I say all the time, we've got the best employees in the world, we do, we mentioned the sheriff and the work that they've been doing, and it goes across all of our departments, and through this, they've been exceptional, and you should be proud, we couldn't be prouder of them because they're doing a great job for us, and I'll, we have a staff meeting tomorrow, and I'll pass along what you all said tonight to them as well, and thank you for that. Two action items, one is, we've been requested to modify the Rollison Channel authorization to include the South Ferry Channel down in Hatteras. That's a process that Brent and others have been working on with the Corps, and they want to get that moving. That may require us from time to time to write a letter or do a resolution, what I would like from you all is you all to give the chairman the authority to sign letters or sign resolutions to do those things, because we don't know what the timing's going to be, or how quickly they're going to be, so that we don't have to come back and waste two weeks waiting for a meeting in order to get a letter out, or to get something out that one of the political people, or the Corps, or somebody needs right now, so.
So moved. Yeah, I second it. This is motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, and the second was Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? I mean Tobin, excuse me. Well, he raised his, "I looked that way."
No, no. Chairman's correct.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear, so I looked that way when you raised your hand.
That was the question.
All right.
I have no objections, could you briefly-
Clark, let me get that corrected, it was Tobin, not Ross.
This is an extraordinary, tough board to deal with, but I'm trying to best to hold up. Could you refresh, maybe I'm the only one, on the Rollison Channel and South Ferry, I just don't recall the specifics of, again, I have no objection, I just don't recall.
So, Rollison Channel is a federally authorized channel, and in the old days, Rollison Channel would take you out to what they call the gorge, and would allow you to get out into the ocean from Hatteras.
Ah, okay.
As things have deteriorated, you can't get from Rollison Channel to the ocean without going around the horseshoe and getting to the South Ferry Channel that we've been spending money on and got the permits to fix.
That's also the connecting channel, you've already referred to as the connecting channel.
And so what we're trying to do is get that little piece that we've been paying included in the Rollison Channel authorization, so that the Corps can come in and do those little maintenance projects that need to be done twice annually to keep that channel open and get those manners out to the ocean.
Yeah, gotcha.
And Rob, it's funny, it all depends on how these things are written, and with Oregon Inlet Authorization of Fonzie, it says follow best water?
Follow?
Best water.
Ah, I see.
So it's not a specific-
Right, it's where's the best pathway.
-channel, whereas Rollinson's Channel isn't that, it's a specific channel, so it's-
And at one time, it was best water.
Yeah, at one time it was.
Long time ago.
Yeah, 133 years ago. I don't know if it's such a thing anymore. It's best water. Does that help you Commissioner?
Yes.
Second item, Mr.-
Yes, sir.
Manager on the motion? Yo, sorry, I'm sorry. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like that? Thank you, sir. Motion carries unanimously.
The second item, as you know, we're involved in that opioid litigation, and it's been ongoing, and it's been ongoing throughout the country. The state of Ohio has just recently, I believe, is or about to settle their case, and they're working on the details, and the opioid companies are working on settlement with everyone. In North Carolina, they've appointed an opioid settlement task force, the Association of County Commissioners have appointed that, and there are five county commissioners from throughout the state, five county attorneys from throughout the state, and five county managers from throughout the state, and I'm one of those five on that committee, and so we're meeting to try to figure out what's right for North Carolina, at least from the perspective of county government, so that we can work with the Attorney General's Office and others to try to see if there's a path to settlement for the opioid cases in North Carolina. With that said, we need a motion pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matter of Dare versus Amerisource Burger Drug et al., which is the opioid lawsuit.
So moved. Motion by Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like that? Motion carries unanimously. Back to regular session, County Manager, any further business?
In the closed session, the county manager, or the county attorney, updated the board on the opioid litigation and took no action, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else for us this evening?
The dog park is part of the animal shelter project, the construction's finished, as long as the hydro seed didn't wash away this morning, you're 30 to 60 days out of reopening. And then, Human Services took bids last week, they went pretty well, except they didn't get a bid for HBAC, and they are rebidding that this Thursday or Friday, and the plan is to get the GMP to meet next Tuesday and get it on your next board agenda.
Great. Dave, while I got you, I was out the other day, and it really looked good, I saw them trying to finish up the dog park and get that, so they could get it open, it looks good over there. There's a huge pile, I know they brought in fill, there's a huge pile of dirt, is that going on top of the fill?
It will go on top, but that was the unsuitable soils.
Okay.
That was underneath where the building was going to go, so that was excavated and replaced.
Okay, okay, cool, looks good out there, they've done a lot of work.
Dave, I've got a question too, are they starting that?
No, hydro seed.
Hydro seed.
Hydro seed, you said hydro seed.
I saw the guy out there, I didn't know, but I was thinking of the, it'd be nice to have some grass out there.
30 to 60 days.
Pray for some sun.
Yeah.
Pray for some sun. And pray it didn't get washed away. We'll have a well-seeded gully. That's right, that's right. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Since you're all the hydro seed, I was out there today, I went out to check on breakwood in some of those places and see how they fare from the rain, and for the most part, pretty good. But anyway, I went by there, and the hydro seed's still there, the, when they spray it, it's all green, and it's still all green, so it hasn't washed away yet.
We got more rain coming though, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
About three days worth.
Yeah, pardon?
About three days this week.
Yeah, every day this week. It's a pretty good fixing agent that they have, that they spray it on with.
It sticks everything.
Grind on concrete, wouldn't it? Yeah. That brings us to the end of our meeting, is there a motion to adjourn until June 1, 9 a.m.?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner House, seconded by-
Second.
Commissioner Ross, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who like that? Motion carries unanimously.